Thank you very much.
Did you hear that?
No, I come back from Jim, but I want to give him a call. Send an email, maybe a longer email than I'd like to get. So I'll give him a call tomorrow. Can I slow down? I don't know if I'll check his email. So I'm gonna, I may try to get him a call too.
So is it normal? So nice to meet you. Sometimes it's black.
Can I make a copy of this? I'm sorry, the sheriff's phone.
I think it's not your.
It's still definitely as the kind of.
And has enough to use on it now that there's commercial. We finally had enough doors that we have commercials.
Fabulous. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Lafayette City Council to order. And let's stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Malkinson present, Councilor Carswell. Councilor Gilgan. Councilor Paulson. Councilor Quillen. Councilor Burrows. Councilor K, here. And we have a quorum. Okay, we are entering a time of citizen input. There was a sign up sheet to see if people wanted to. There's time at the end. I will open up for any additional people. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And also come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Coming up to the podium is so that we can make sure that we capture you on the audio. So Greg Goulart.
Howdy, council. Greg Goulart, P O Box 1077. I'm gonna need a little more than three minutes here as a citizen and as LCAT.
Okay, you can go for, if you keep it separate, you have.
I will, okay. So as a citizen, I think, you know, the neighborhood's still looking pretty good. I'm glad the sheriffs are here. Fourth and Jefferson, right here behind the Pope, the fire station. People just don't like to stop at that stop sign. That's a good spot for you guys to sit. I'm always very cautious coming down there because I don't want to get hit. So that's a good spot. Matt Lot used to sit over there a lot, so. That's it for Citizen Greg. LCAT Greg, so I'm here just to speak on behalf of LCAT. Marilyn's also here. And I just wanted to give you guys an update on, you know, how we're doing. And in general, I think our volunteer base is is pretty decent. We can always use more volunteers and it'd be nice to have a few more folks like step up to chair. So we're looking for folks that that are interested in new newer activities or, you know, more activities other than the basic ones. Fourth of July, Christmas tree lighting, Harvest Festival. Our finances are looking pretty good. Our, the raffles that we held last year actually kind of, you know, gave us a few extra hundred bucks, you know, here and there. So we're looking good. The the main events for this year are still looking good. Fourth of July is is in planning stages now. The city's doing a resource day. We're planning on attending that. That's April 6th. We're also planning on citywide garage sale shortly after the fourth. I'm not sure if it's going to be the weekend after or the following weekend. We're not, we're still playing around. We're not sure because Fourth of July is on a Thursday this year. So maybe we'll do it the following weekend. And Earth Day is coming up. Earth Day is April 22nd. So we we were interested in planting maybe two or three trees that are approved by the city, native trees at Veterans Park. But my understanding is that the councils put a hold on anything going on in Veterans Park. I know we had a park planned for that a couple of years back. I think it was three or four million dollars. So I don't see that happening anytime soon. So in the meantime, we're interested in planting a few trees there. They'd all be donated trees. It wouldn't cost the city anything. And we're we're up until the location within the park where you want them and what kind of trees. But we're open to that. And also, we're thinking about maybe doing a little beautification here along Third Street for Earth Day. Maybe planting some flowers and some of the empty flower pots that are, you know, throughout the sidewalks here on either side. Other than that, that's all I had.
So thanks for coming.
Yeah, any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, I don't think council has ever specifically said we're putting a hold on anything at Veterans. Just more of a, we need to respect whatever parks plan there is and not just willy nilly.
Yeah, so my thought is, you know, I think it's going to be a good five or 10 years before there's like major development in that park. So, you know, if we plant trees now, it'll they'll look nice. And if they have to be cut down, then then so be it. But I think for the time being, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
There's nothing there. So something, something in there would be nice just to have, you know, some little pop here and there.
So where does that fit with the scope of things Brandon with? Like permitting that or not permitting that?
So we had a discussion at the last LCAT meeting and I kind of committed us to doing this. But then it was brought to my attention that a few months ago, we had a community member come by and who wanted to pick up some of corns and plant some trees. And it kind of at that discussion was like, we should probably put a hold on planting anything or doing anything regarding trees. So that's why I asked Mr. Greg to be here today to see if there's a change to that, at least on the maybe the fence part of comments, just because it is Earth Day. This would be the first time of doing something for Earth Day. And I think it would be a great event for LCAT and the city to be involved with. But I also know that.
Comments, not comments.
Sorry. So I just, you know, don't know if there was a change on that. Maybe the council would feel differently about maybe planting a couple of trees along the fence line that were native to the area. But I know if coming from LCAT may be a little better than coming from me. So I just.
So there we are again. Earth Day is April 22nd. I think the, I think Washer is also doing something.
Yes.
PTA, right?
No, the school.
Yeah, the school is also doing something that day. And I think LDA is, are they putting up peace polls? Is that for that?
Well, Rotary is working with the school for a peace poll at Washer.
The Rotary, okay. Okay, so anyway, that's all I had.
So Brandon, what what are our choices with Trina? Do we?
Well.
We have to approve that and up of that.
No, well, there was a pretty clear directive out of that last conversation to kind of hold off on stuff in parks. So I don't want to go over that and then go over something the governing body said.
Can we commit to finding time on the agenda before next Earth Day to evaluate?
Okay, so nothing for this year?
Yeah, but appreciate that Earth Day is being brought up and wants to be recognized. Are we comfortable with that? Okay. Okay. Did you hear that, Greg?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I asked Brandon to like that this Earth Day, unfortunately, just to rush something because it's on the calendar and Earth Day is coming, but it's not appropriate. However, let's make time before next Earth Day to evaluate Veterans Park.
About planning, sure, okay.
Okay, and I did want to add that we are on on Earth Day. We are planning on, we've got the okay with, what is the pack rat down here on the corner? So we're gonna kind of put a bunch of flowers in there, a little corner there and.
For volunteers to help clean it up too.
Yeah, and and do a little cleaning out for for planning on pressure washing or what? I'm not sure the details yet, but we'd like to clean up that little corner right there as well, so. We still need, I'm gonna send you an email. Fourth of July, we we need, we need a victim, a volunteer, I mean.
Any other requests for public input? Okay, additions? Yeah. It's, I stashed out the one. Okay, additions or deletions to the agenda? Brandon, is it correct in hearing that our, that Judge Blake is coming next month, not this month? So we can delete the report from the municipal judge?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I made a mistake. I thought it was going to be the March meeting and April meeting. But I'd also like to add 11 F, which is going to be the city council special meeting minutes from March 13th, 2024, which was yesterday.
Okay, which we are bound legally to do, so.
I would also like to ask that we move items seven, eight, nine, and 15 to a consent agenda. Since we have written a report.
Nine and 15. I am okay with seven, eight, and nine.
We have written reports for all these. We have a long meeting ahead of us.
I have not submitted, I have not submitted the written report online.
We have it here, it can be added electronically.
I would like to still, I would like to keep.
Counselors, anything?
15 apart.
Anyone else want to move this to a consent agenda so we can approve it?
All of it?
Yeah.
Anyone else have opinion on moving it to consent agenda? So let's move seven, eight, nine, and 15 to number seven consent as a consent agenda. Anyone, okay, so we are on number seven consent agenda. Sheriff's report, Fire Department report, Public Works Department report, a mayor's report is consent agenda, which removes them from presenting.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Well, thank you all for showing up. My council has decided that your reports are. Thanks. But Officer PJ, you're due any time to, sorry, I know Officer PJ is not here.
Oh, no, you're good.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so congratulations on your incoming baby.
Yeah, we're excited.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion item 10A, Water Demand and Supply presentation by GSI Water Solutions. Brandon, I'll handle, hand this over to you.
Everybody in their packet was added. You'll have the presentation that GSI will be discussing with us right now. So you can follow along if you cannot see, right those at home with the zoom screen. I got it right, is that right here? There you go. Perfect. You get a copy here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Watch out, yeah.
Super sensitive. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Tim Pinkel and with GSI Water Solutions. Today will be like to present, Brandon has asked me to present to you some information about your water system, specifically water supply and forecasts that we've done in the past in terms of what your demand may be like, predicted to be like in the future. And then discuss some options available in terms of supply. Very touching. Our goals today, again, just to describe the results of our water system demand forecast that we did. And that's based on our 2020 Water Management Conservation Plan that we did for you back back then. In in that Water Management Conservation Plan, we did a demand forecast and analyzed your supply. So this is a very appropriate so that the document we're relying heavily on for this presentation. And then also to present some preliminary options for you in regard to supply. So our topics in rough order here, we'll discuss very briefly what your water rights and supply. Just provide a background on those. We're all kind of starting from the same place in this discussion. It's an opportunity for us also to to discuss our, the future water system demand projections that we that we that we did for you. We'll identify the current supply versus future demands. And then again, for the preliminary supply options, that's the agenda for today. Okay, actions. So we can't see the full screen, but at the top it says GSI Water Solutions and City of Lafayette have been partners for over 20 years. I went back and looked at our file system and Lafayette was client number eight for us, which is pretty cool. So thank you very much for a long relationship with 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 the city. It's been wonderful. And the wonderful things that we've been working on with you is the Aquifer Storage and Recharge Program, which some of you may be familiar with, you may not. I'll describe it a little bit later. But 15 years ago, it was a recommendation by GSI to install this Aquifer Storage and Recharge System, which captures water from Bluebird Springs in the in the winter when there's big flow, puts it in the aquifer and then we pump it out in the summer to meet, help meet your summer demands. And then again, as I mentioned, we did the Water Management Conservation Plan. And in the past, we've done some value, other evaluations of water supply for you. Those are just a couple smatterings of things that we've worked on for you. So thanks for your, thanks for being a great client. Um, this is your, your.
Try and move this here. If you want this, because we have the most captioning, you can use that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Great, this is a a table of all your water rights and we're not going to go through much of this. I just bring included here to give you, to to remind you of your water rights, if you weren't familiar with, and if you weren't familiar with them, to give you an overview of them. So off to the left, you see you have about seven groundwater rights and then four surface water rights. These are what supply between these two, these two types of water supplies. As we'll see in a few minutes, they represent roughly 70, 80% of of your water that you that you use to meet your system demand. The part here that that I just want to references and mention is that because all the water sources of supply that we're going to be talking about today have a water right associated with them. Can't use water from anywhere, has to have a water right. And so these are, these are yours and your city is lucky to have so many, which provides a lot of variety for you and options to just in case there's an issue with one, you can always access the other. Any questions about the water rights?
It says City Park Wells, the one up at Joel Perkins, Brandon, is that? Okay.
That's pretty dormant though, for the most part.
Okay, I just was.
Okay, so you have three sources of supply. We organize them in the in this way, the watershed. Okay, and the watershed is comprised of four or five wells, your three springs. In addition to Aquifer Storage and Recharge. And so water from, again, water from Bluebird goes into well 10. It charges the the aquifer and then we pump out in the summer to gain that extra supply for you that wasn't there otherwise, wouldn't be there otherwise, because the springs produce significantly in terms of their output in the summer. Then we have the Dayton wellfield, Dayton Lafayette wellfield. There are five wells out there. The city owns two and a half. The other two and a half are owned by Dayton. This is where you get about 16% of your water supply. I forgot to mention, the watershed actually provides about 65% of your demand. So it's the largest of your sources of supply. And then lastly, about 20% of your demand is met through wholesale purchases from McMenville Water and Light. So I'd like to talk about some of your water rights in detail or the sources of supply in a little bit more detail. You probably didn't notice at the bottom of of the screen, but it is on the bottom of the water rights table. It's it's permit S 54792, and that is a permit that authorizes members of the Yambal Regional Water Authority to divert water from the Willamette River. The city is a member of that, of that, along with the city of Carlton and McMenville Water and Light. So all three of you hold portions of that water right. And the city has access to, would have access to 3.2 million gallons. The entire right is for 26.5 million gallons. I would all add also that on that right is the city of Dayton, but they're not a part of the wire. I would all add also that on that right is the city of Dayton, but they're not a part of the wire. No water is being pulled from the Willamette River. There's no infrastructure to do that. That has not been developed yet, so no intake, no treatment plantings. No transmission lines. So this right is unutilized at this point. Looking at your packet, what I wanted to do here was show show how much water you get from each of these individual sources of supply during the summer. The reason I'm specifically identifying the summer is because that's when your demand is highest. Typically, water, water use increases by two to three times. And that's primarily due to outdoor, outdoor uses of water, and that's due primarily to outdoor irrigation. So we focus on what your, how your current source of supply can meet your current demand, your summer demand. And as you can tell, in the spring, in, in the watershed, the springs only produce thirty-five gallons per minute. Pretty small. That's a few showers simultaneously. And then, and then for the wells, they produce about two hundred and thirty-six gallons per minute. The Dayton Lafayette well field is two hundred, roughly about the same, two hundred and thirty-seven point five gallons per minute. And then you can get a total of five hundred gallons per minute from McMenville Water and Light, your, your connection with them, per your agreement. So the total is about a thousand million gallons per minute total that you're able to get from your system over the course, at, at, at any time typically during peak season or summer season. So in reference to that, let's take a look. So we talked about supply for a few minutes. Let's take a look at what we've projected to be demand. And by demand, I mean how much water is going to go to consumption for your, to meet your customers' needs. That also includes water loss and any, any other use that is unmetered. So we estimate that in twenty twenty-three, the population is about forty, forty-seven, forty-eight hundred people. And that's based on Portland State University's estimate. We translated that to a, a, a demand, and we translated that to demand using historical data. And so that translates to nine hundred and seventy-two gallons per minute. We'll reference the previous slide that I showed where it identified about a thousand gallons per minute you're able to use from your current sources of supply. These numbers are very rough, okay, because we don't actually have, we don't actually have the maximum data man, so these are estimates. By maximum data man, that's the most water that you, that you would expect to use at any time during the year. And that almost always happens during the summer, again, because of the, the high use during summer. So in twenty thirty-one, as population grows, so too does demand. We were up to twelve, about twelve, thirteen hundred gallons per minute, and then we project by twenty forty-one, it'll be close to fifteen hundred gallons per minute. So we'll combine both that supply and the demand pieces in this next slide. And what we show is the first, the first, in the, in this graph. The first column is for twenty thirty-one and the second column is for twenty forty-one. The dark blue, the two hundred and thirty-eight gallons per minute represents water from your well field. The two hundred and seventy-one gallons per minute represents water from your watershed. Again, this is a peak season. Between those two and what we, what I mentioned earlier is supply, excuse me, a demand forecast in twenty thirty-one of, of about thirteen hundred gallons per minute. We have a deficit of roughly seven hundred and sixty-two gallons per minute by twenty thirty-one. Now, as I mentioned before, this doesn't include Mac Water and Light. As I mentioned before, they can provide, that can provide up to five hundred gallons per minute currently out of your current agreement with them. So that would reduce, of course, that deficit to around, if I'm doing my math right. Thank you, two sixty. And then by twenty forty-one, of course, that deficit increases. Add back in that water light and that gives you an extra five hundred, so an extra, you're about, you're about four, four eighty of a deficit.
So the deficit grows double every ten years from what the math works out to. It'll, it'll double by twenty forty-one.
Current use?
Yes.
Yep, from current use. Yeah, yep, yep. So in presenting this, this, this deficit, the city has some supply options. Wanted to talk with you about that. We only have a few slides left. So these are things that we've, we've batted around myself and my coworker Kenny. And Kenny's been working with the city for much longer than I have, ten, fifteen years. So he's very familiar with your system. And we came up with some ideas that the city might want to consider, and we've talked with Brandon about these as well. We haven't, I do want to mention that we haven't vetted any of these. We haven't dove into the details, so costs are not, not, we haven't identified costs, we haven't identified timelines, feasibility, et cetera. Okay, these are just ideas to start a discussion to help meet that deficit that the city is anticipating, that we're anticipating the city will, will see at least by twenty thirty-one. So the first one is expand also supply purchases from, from Mac Water and Light. I'm going to guess that they are open and willing and ready to, to, to sell you additional water. Just, and modify that in IGA. That is probably your easiest and fastest way to gain supply. I don't know what the capacity is of that system, but I think it's well over five hundred gallons per minute. So that would make up that deficit of two hundred and sixty gallons per minute that we talked about by twenty thirty-one. You can expand your aquifer storage and recharge system. Currently, we're only, you're only storing water from one of your springs. But you've got a couple of other springs, so you could actually put all of that water instead of just one of the springs potentially into the aquifer. And to keep that water for your summertime use, which is the most, which is when, again, demand is at its highest. That would, there are some contingencies there, right? Hopefully, you'd be able to get buy water from Mac Water and Light in the winter for less expensive, at a lesser rate than you would during the summer when it's highly needed. If that's the case, potentially could be saving some money over the long term by not using.
So save our water to use when the water is more expensive and buy water when it's cheaper.
Yeah, if you can get that kind of, if, if they're open to that kind of discussion, then a negotiation for your next agreement. The other is you could potentially store wholesale water in your, in the aquifer potentially. Okay, that would actually require quite a bit of infrastructure, particularly pipings. So that may not be a great option, but it is still an option potentially for you. Again, it really depends on what the, the your agreement is with, any new agreement you get with, with Mac Water and Light. You could utilize existing water rights. So as we'll see in a few minutes in a slide. You're not using all of the capacity of your existing water, water rights associated with your wells. So that's another option. You can actually build new wells or modify your existing wells to be, to have a higher capacity. So that you can gain that extra, gain the extra use from those wells. Because, and we'll take a look at that again in a minute. I'll describe that a little bit more. For example, well six and seven, not being used at all right now. And you have water rights associated with those. Those could bring on, I think it's roughly three hundred gallons per minute, if my memory serves. Together, assuming three hundred and thirty gallons per minute, I think, assuming that you can find a suitable location and those wells, that well or those wells you construct would provide, would be able to provide you that rate, right, that the aquifer is, is that productive. That would be a big, if it was one well, that'd be a big well for you, by the way. As we jump, I'll jump back here real quick just to reference this table. Your best well is well, is well ten, and it can produce a hundred and forty gallons per minute in the summer. Park well is your next biggest, and that's only sixty gallons per minute. So not, not, not that's, your current wells aren't producing it relative to their water rights, which we'll again look at in a second. And then lastly, not last, excuse me, utilize existing water rights. As I mentioned, you have a Willamette River water right, and that is potential option as well, albeit some significant costs associated with that. We're going to jump to the next slide and we start talking about each of these options in more detail. So this first, this, this first portion here that you can't see is, says watershed. So as I mentioned, your water rights authorize quite a bit of water, but your wells can't produce in many cases. So for example, your water rights authorize eight hundred and two gallons per minute. But your summer capacity from your wells is only two hundred and thirty-six within the watershed. So essentially, there's five hundred and sixty-two gallons per minute on the table. Which is, which would make up that, those, both of those deficits, deficits, I think, over the next eighteen years. Similarly, your springs, not much you can do about your springs, of course, because they, they give you, they give you. But your right authorized seven hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute, and their summer capacity is only thirty-five. Now, in the winter, that would be a bunch different, right? You'd probably, you'd be much closer to what the water right would authorize, authorize you to get.
When you say capacity, you mean what they're actually producing?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And then the well field, your right authorizes a significant amount of water, fifteen hundred gallons per minute. And your max capacity in the summer is about two hundred and thirty-eight gallons per minute. Historically, that whole system hasn't been productive. It hasn't been as beneficial for the city as, neither city as both cities had hoped when originally installed. And there are some reasons for that, that I won't get into right now, that were beyond both cities' control at the time. Okay, so let's take a look at the Willamette, dive in a little bit deeper. Let's take a look at the Willamette River. Right, again, about fourteen hundred, about fifteen hundred gallons per minute, a rate you're authorized for. When you would, if you were considering developing this, you'd have over ten years' worth of time for permitting, for construction, et cetera. There's a catch with this water right, though, besides the millions and millions of dollars for the infrastructure and permitting. Is that the right can only be used when the Willamette River is above certain target flows. And I've listed these target flows here on your, on the slide. In the next slide, I'll show you how often those are not met. But what happens is when they are not met, is that the city cannot draw water from the river at all until the river returns to these targets.
On, on, on that, there's a lot of cities that operate off the Willamette. They take precedence because their permits, we're, they have permits to live in us, so they get certain things before we do. That's kind of.
That is another feature or issue associated with your water right that we're not addressing here, but you're absolutely right, Brandon. This actually is written in the permit and it's associated with maintaining the persistence of listed fish, and by that I mean salmon, right? Environment, yeah, ESA related species. So ODF and W, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, when they reviewed your permit, made a recommendation to Oregon, Oregon Water Resources Department to include this, these targets when your permit was issued.
To be clear, though, you could build an infrastructure and buy a fuller water right, after the fact.
You could potentially, if there's water rights available, you could definitely do that.
How close to average flow are these numbers? I mean, is it?
Great question. Let's take a look. I thought that might come up, and so I wanted to show you on an annual basis how often these target flows are not met. And this is based on a seven-day rolling average. There's only been one year in the course of the last, what is that, ten, that those targets have been met all year. The worst year being twenty twenty-one, seventy-eight days of those targets were not met. And those targets weren't met in the summertime when you need water the most. So if you did go this route, going to forces with Carlton, with Mac Water and Light, with, with Dayton, who also have that right, as I mentioned, and build a water treatment plant, you'd need a supplemental source of supply to accommodate for these if these, these days where you wouldn't be able to pull water. Okay, on the next slide is discussing, oh, that was it, actually. So happy to go over the end of these slides, but I just wanted to provide a summary. Again, city will have a deficit of supply within the next ten years. And probably sooner than that, possibly sooner than that. Again, these are, these are rough numbers. But, but it's a great time now to be starting to think about what are the next steps. You have several options available to you, which is, which is wonderful. Many communities would love to have these options. Many options to them, and we went over, we went over several of them. Our recommendation is that the city does give, do consideration to the next steps. And identify a couple of options to evaluate in, in, in more deeply.
And so when you say soon, how soon?
So.
Sorry, that could be someone's definition of, you know, when the next.
Tomorrow, yeah, okay. So what we show, jumping back here, is that right, between now and twenty thirty-one, we're projecting that, well, we're projecting that we're going to bump over that one thousand gallons per minute. Again, the nine hundred and seventy-two is just an estimate. We, we're not, we don't know if we're actually there yet. It could be nine fifty, it could be nine hundred. That's just by, we just don't know that, that number, that number, because the city is not able to track their highest data man. So that's all I had. Open the questions?
Just counsel, have any?
In the interest of ongoing contract negotiations, I would heavily recommend that we put off heavy discussion on this until after March nineteenth.
I agree.
Okay. Like any discussion, like even a question, but that doesn't include like if anyone has a question?
I just don't want to jeopardize ongoing contract negotiations with public record discussions.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Just, it, it, it's just a general question. You're saying we're expected to have a deficit in ten years. What's that based on? And what, what population? Or I, I don't have the handout, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure, good question. So it's based on, so we ascribed a gallons per capita per day to the population. So let's pretend, I forget what that number is, but let's pretend.
Just say five thousand, right?
I'll, I'll, I'll make the guess that's really high. It's probably around like two hundred, three hundred gallons gallon per capita for first.
Gotcha.
Right, so we multiply that times the population. It's, it's a bit of a crude methodology, and you're projecting the growth, and the population is best on, is based on Portland State University Population Research Centers forecast. And that's common throughout, that's a methodology that's common throughout the state. Almost, almost all the utilities use that methodology. Or not the, but the UPS use.
Do you have that number that you guys used?
Me too, yeah, and you, you, sorry, you didn't, you didn't see that, but it is in the packet. And so just to let you know what that.
Is, it's going to be posted, right? I've had a bunch of, you can talk about it if you want, and, and you're going to update the agenda, the online agenda, or is this out there?
No, that was just given up to me today.
Got you.
It'll be part of the minutes when we file them away.
Okay, so I'm going to highly take Counselor Gilken's suggestion of tabling any discussions since there's negotiations going on. But I don't want to ignore that, you know, we need to.
Yeah, we definitely should address this. I just think it takes some time to wait after talking.
Yeah, so in the next few months, can you just put a?
I just want to make sure while we have them here.
Yeah.
This is a lot, and I watch why I had him come here today, because this is a lot to digest, especially over one night, but there's a lot of new counselors. I really want everybody to understand, because this is going to be a very impactful thing for our community, that we, if we have any questions.
About the content he.
About the content or questions that, no question, it's a stupid question. I think right now is the time to do that. I understand the contract stuff, I completely agree, but in terms of maybe some of the other little things that we have in here. He's a professional in this, and he knows more about the system than anybody else in this room knows.
I have a basic question. When I do the math, forty-seven hundred and fifty-five divided by the gallons per minute, it gives point oh two four four. But when you look at the others, they're point two three nine oh, and I'm wondering if the more people you have, they use more per individual.
I don't think so. I think we use a common factor. Um, I don't think so, I think we use a common factor. The common water use factor for each person, and that was based on historical.
Okay.
So I'd have to look at the numbers a little bit closer, but, um.
So I mean, if, if we had twenty thousand people, we could just multiply it by the factor that you guys have here, kind of see.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
I also think of practicality, even more and more developments are coming in as HOAs because of developer costs. And how many lots they can get on with private streets and whatnot, so I think that HOAs are more likely to have requirements of water in ones. I do think the higher the population goes, the more water per person it will take as we grow.
What we are finding, if you don't mind, counselor, is that, that just the opposite is happening.
Really?
Primarily because, um, older homes have less efficient, uh, fixtures.
And those are getting updated.
And, and, and so with a new home, it'll be, it'll have the latest and greatest, uh, fixtures. Not only that, but, um, typically lot sizes tend to be smaller. I don't know if that's the direction the city is going.
Well, and I think that's why developers choose HOAs, they can do private streets, they get more lots.
There you go, yeah, right. So what we're finding in communities such as Lafayette is that water use per capita is going down, which is, which is great.
Great.
Yeah, great.
Thank you for that.
I appreciate your, um, presentation, and I actually think it was very.
It was great.
Very great, like, I followed along with that, either way, I thought, so, um, and I know that Brandon works alongside you. And in the next few months, we will at least start the pre-planning of timeline and when to discuss them. I know that sounds like a plan.
Before we come back, probably talking more video channel, but.
But yeah.
I, I have a general question. Um, do these numbers take into account the effect that, uh, our new, um, reservoir is going to affect? Our water supply, our water storage and supply?
We didn't, we, we didn't take that into account because it shouldn't impact, it'll, it'll impact. Let, let's put it this way, it gives you, you're right, it gives you extra storage on those hot days, right? So the more water you can store, the more, the, the higher demand you can meet. We didn't factor that in. That would be a piece of your water system master plan or water master plan. That would look at like the, that level of detail.
Okay.
You know, so we, absent that, we would use the expertise of Chad and his, and his crew. Um, to help us understand kind of what that balance looks like.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let you sneak out of here. So I was planning to take a break at this time, but we are so far ahead of schedule, so I'm going to hold off on that, um, until after our next item. Um, our next item is, uh, agenda nine of eight, B, Evaluation of the Downtown Business Association Initiative. Um, normally I would hand this straight over to Brandon for the report, but since I am the one that asked for it to be put on the agenda. Um, I thought I'd explain why. Um, I would like to evaluate if we are successfully achieving the project of starting a functioning five oh one C six. Um, also meant the Downtown Business Association, that was originally presented to the council. As, um, from all of my research, it was presented as a six-month project. Um, totaling about sixteen thousand, which was five thousand for starting the five oh one C, the legal fees. And other parts of that, and then eleven thousand was the E A G Economic Advancement Group, is that the name of it, Brandon?
Okay.
No, uh, Larry Stover's company. Anyway, the E A G, um, to facilitate it, uh, and then during the January two thousand and twenty-three council meeting. When the final funds were approved, um, that was my first meeting as a, the mayor. Um, Counselor Gilgan did state that in six months, he, meaning Larry, was saying that we will see results. If we don't, we lost and we made a bad call, and I feel that that was setting us, um, for the expectation to evaluate our success or not. Um, additionally, because of, of the thirty-three thousand dollars that has been expended over these last few years. I believe we owe it to the business owners and residents who were described in multiple, by multiple sitting counselors at the time. That the initiative, uh, it was initial discussions to be practically begging for something to evaluate if we were able to produce. What council set out to do, and this includes evaluating the costs. Um, at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, I had asked, um, L D A to come present to us, which they did, because they hadn't. And, uh, part of the final funding was to kind of, was to give us a six-month devalue, um, update or, uh, report. Uh, they came, um, Larry Stover, who is now their executive officer of the L D A, presented. And in order to close the project, I felt that it was important for us to evaluate if we were successful in. Starting a functioning five oh one C six. Uh, Brandon, is there any other information you want to?
No, um, everything provided in the package goes back to agendas, minutes, mission statement, stuff that was provided to me along the way. Saw that as a part of, uh, the pretty big packet here in front of you, so.
So, um, does council have? Any questions or discussion? Uh, we don't have to come up with a official directive, it's just us at the council. Um, having a chance to look at, um, all the minutes that. Transcribed what happened through the process since it's changed, the council changed hands. Um, and decide if we feel that we have a functioning five oh one C six, because. If not, we can't just pass that off that we listened to what people were wanting. Um, so I guess the first question is going off of the first initial, um, one was, you know, the five thousand to start a five oh one. C six, that's a black and white, we, they were able to start one, but I think everything else is not necessarily black and white. But, um. I, yeah, I would like to know, um, if everyone had a chance to read over the information and catch themselves up on. The process of this, I feel thirty-three thousand dollars is a lot to spend.
And we haven't seen really any results from it?
Um.
I just wanted to know, we, we did not start a five oh one C six, we, we granted the money for a five oh one C six to get its filings. We, we don't, we don't start nonprofits.
Yeah, sorry.
So it was started, though?
It was started, there is currently a five oh one C six that, the, the money that the, you know, the city. Um. So I, but I don't feel that there, that some of the other objectives have main objectives that have been met. Um, I attended a recent board meeting that, uh, Larry Stover still was running the meeting. Um, I have met with businesses that had not even heard of the L D A. Um, I had a few counselors at the Business Focus Discussion Group with, that Brandon and I hosted, and. Um, after, uh, Larry left, I did ask. Um, I did have a chance to ask how many of them were aware of the L D A or had an experience, and the majority of them had not. Um, is that your recollection, Council Bros, was there, was that your recollection too? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Uh, but that, that's what I already announced.
Um, and one of the follow-up things from that is. Uh, I invited, uh, the L D A to join me this coming Monday in a follow-up session to try to connect them. Um, one of the big things that was brought up was they just wanted things like a website that if someone Googled. For Lafayette, that their business would come up, and they were told that he needed a grant for that in order to build that, and. Um, so I, I, I think the intent was there, I just, through all of my reading, I don't feel that. There were any tangibles brought forward. Brandon, did we make it into the Main Street program?
Uh, no, not yet. That, that, that's, that would be a multi-year process. You can be a Main Street member.
Um, so I just, I, I, I don't want to point fingers or blame or whatnot, I just want to make sure that if we haven't succeeded in. Providing a resource to our citizens, that it was projected to be, that we don't just push aside that they're needing.
Oh, I want to think that we're not providing the resource, but the five oh one C six is a separate entity from the city.
Correct.
We're not, we are not them. So I guess my question is, are, is there something upcoming that I'm unaware of, that we're considering giving them more money?
No, I'm just, do we?
Are we here to, are we, I, I don't understand if we're here to analyze their success or analyze the decisions of prior councils. I'm just, I'm not sure what we're analyzing here.
Um, well, in the last year, you specifically had mentioned that, um, he's saying that we were finally going to have results. Which was something a few counselors were asking for, where are the tangible results, where are the tangible results? And that if we didn't have tangible results, we as a council would say, um, we lost and it was a mistake.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, we give out lots of grants every year, right? I assume we're not analyzing every grant recipient's use of the funds.
But it wasn't just a grant, the last one was a grant, the other ones was, um, business contract between the city and E A G.
So is the idea to look at the business contract?
Um, I don't know if we can hold them, if there was any, um.
I'm saying, if there's a failure on a counterparty of a business contract, we have repercussions. If we give out grant money, we're not happy it was used, we, we're not doing that for everybody else, I'm not sure. I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what the.
Um, I, I think, I think the, the two things, answer the first one, um, I do think that. Um, maybe we should look at the contract to see if it was met. Since there was so much money poured into it and so many times, um. But I just think that, uh, that.
Would the intent be to go back on them and say, hey, give us back money?
No, but if we're not feeling, I have a hard time with. L D A is currently like on the city's website, is that's the downtown association that we're. Um, pointing people into the direction of that, um.
We're supporting our local businesses by doing that.
Yeah, if there was another downtown.
But if our businesses aren't feeling that they're getting anything out of that.
Are the, are the L D A members coming to us and saying they're not getting anything?
Well, um, their president resigned this past week.
Yeah, but are they, are they, like, I haven't gotten any emails, has anybody else? I, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand the purpose of the conversation here.
Uh, the purpose of the conversation is, is I feel that this, we as a council, and not everyone was on the council something. As a council over the last few years, started in on a project of, that was supposed to be seventeen, sixteen thousand dollars. To provide the funding for a five oh one C six to be created as its own separate entity. And contracted multiple times and extended those with a business organization.
Yeah, so I think we.
That we have not.
So we didn't, we didn't start a project, we granted money for a five oh one C six to become a five oh one C six. I also, did, did we enter the contract with Larry Stover, or did the, or did the L D A?
Uh, Preston signed it.
The original contract was.
So, so, so if we want to look at a service contract, I think that's fine, but I think to analyze, like, how grand money I'm using, we don't do that with any other grant recipients. So I'm just not sure why that's in front of us right now.
Um. Because I.
And I'm happy to do that, I'm happy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to look at.
We've had discussions about changing the grant agreement, so we can do that in the future, but.
Okay.
I don't think that's in the grant agreement.
Um.
Some businesses that are disappointed in their services.
There are.
And so do we have, do we have that in front of us?
Uh, no, it was, um, all verbal, um, but, uh, our city administrator and two of our counselors, uh, Counselor Colon's not here tonight, but were present.
Is it possible to get people on the record for it?
I, I, I would be assuming so. I mean, I have a, I have a. Uh, those that wanted to provide their email address so I could, you know, stay in contact with them.
So there's people who want to go on the record and talk about it, and that gives us, you know, a reason to look into the contract and whether or not it was a bad contract, and we were wrong through that contract agreement. Then, then I definitely want to open that up, but I'm just, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with what's in front of us here, the city gives grants all the time, and I, I don't. I don't think we have time to go through and analyze every single grant recipient and what they did with the money, uh, that.
Because I think this was more than a grant. I think that there was a contract. I think there was continual, um, promises. That we were supporting, that we told, um, citizens and businesses. This is starting, because you guys are wanting this, you're wanting this, and I would hate for us to be done with the funding of the grant for it, which was. In my opinion, way more than original, and timeline way more than regional, close the book, walk on. And check off, oh, we've, we, we were able to provide the funding and our, and tout that our city has a functioning downtown association.
So this is because you don't think, you, you don't think we got what we're here?
I don't think.
Still indeed.
Yeah, I think there's still, I don't think the purpose of what we, um, initially funded. That we have to offer our community. And I would, I think that if we don't address that, we're nowhere farther ahead than we were. Besides having a, an attached five oh one C six.
So this, this isn't much about the contract, as what we did didn't work.
Yes.
So we're just, so this is more punitive towards previous councils?
No, it's not punitive.
I, I just don't understand.
Uh, because I, I feel that we have businesses and residents that wanted something, and we do collaborate. And L D A is supposed to be the representative of our businesses and to work alongside the city and uses our city name. And goes after grants, then we, and then fault, there was times that was stated that, well, we probably didn't get that grant because the city got a grant. That. We can't, I don't feel that listing them on our website and directing people to, oh, there's a downtown association. If it's not a functioning downtown association, I feel we're putting our name as a city on it, when it's not a place to put our name on it. It's kind of like.
So is this as simple as removing them from the website?
I think it's more.
I just, I just feel like this is based in animosity towards, towards an association, because we don't, we don't analyze all people that we collaborate with like this, I just, I don't understand, I don't.
We don't fund the way we just funded it.
Tens of people, maybe they gave out grants like it was candy.
Maybe they change command structure and they become awesome, I mean.
Okay, well, I, I can only bring to you guys that I asked for it to be evaluated, and you guys, I'm, I'm going on record that I feel that. It was a waste of money and that there's nothing tangible going on for our residents or our business towards it.
And I, I just want to go on record and say that if, if we, you know, if we put everything up that counselors thought was a waste of money, then anybody who voted against anything, we're going to stuff that stuff later. Like, this is, I'm not sure why this is in front of us. Until we have anything written in the record that gives us the reason for wrongdoing under the contract, I, I'm going to move to table this. That's my motion.
My second.
So I have a motion on the table, although we did not give a chance for public input, which is our procedure. So are you willing to?
Public input?
Okay.
I have some.
Yeah.
I appreciate the fact we're looking where this money goes.
Sure.
As a former grant recipient, uh, with the Cub Scouts, many years, we'd get a few hundred dollars and we were always. Very careful about how that money gets spent, mindful of where it came from, presuming that we got that from the citizens of Lafayette. And this is a lot more money than that, and it sounds like we're not getting anything, not getting what we expected for the investment we made. I think that definitely needs to be assessed.
Well, I, I want to point out that we're not, when we give grants, they're not investment, right?
Well, in your opinion, it is an investment.
If I may, it's, it's, it's in a charitable, for example, we give a grant to the P T A to replace books in the library. It sounded, the city's not expecting anything in return for that. We gave an investment to a food bank this year. The city's not expecting anything in return for that. We think they're doing good deeds and we want them to move forward with them. And I appreciate, I am, if you can look back at my record, I am probably the most against spending in this entire council. I, I've had very up the comments that I've made for it. I don't like to waste money, I certainly don't. My concern is the, whether we're targeting one particular association or the other, if we want to, if we want to examine, we're all the money for all the grants. Look for it, I don't want to waste money, but I, I, where I have a problem is examining one particular grant. Rather than we're all the money, if that makes sense.
But only the last bit was a grant.
And I, and I do appreciate, I do appreciate your work and, and that you put those grants and put them to good use, I do appreciate that from you.
Man, your leadership of the Cub Scouts.
Yes, I have on the table a motion to table this discussion until there's more, um, documents. So what exactly are you guys wanting from?
I guess businesses should definitely communicate this.
I'm motioning.
Board, and I haven't heard it from any of them.
Yeah, I'm motioning to table until we have some, something written in the record that gives us reason to open that contract to look for wrongdoing. Yeah, I'm motioning to table until we have some, something written in the record that gives us reason to open that contract to look for wrongdoing.
Madam Mayor, yes, would it be appropriate to ask, since she's their representative?
If, um. Now she's our representative.
I'm also on the board.
On, uh, L D A. To ask if you get a report in L D A about the businesses that are contacted?
So some of the board members were. Business owners. Um, I didn't make it to the last meeting that just occurred, um, so I need to follow up with Larry. But in all my interactions, I've not heard anything negative from any of the business owners, um. So that hasn't been reported to me.
Okay. Oh, I can, I can tell you that, um, the owner of the shed, the new, um. Uh, pet grooming business we have. I asked her if she'd been contacted by L D A. She's been coming and involved with, um, the L cap.
I'm, I, I'm gonna just stop you and I, just because that would be, I would.
That's hearsay, I understand. But she didn't have any. Contact.
I will.
I'll let Larry know for you. We definitely should be reaching out. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I will. Okay, so motions on the table to, or. On the table to table this discussion until there is a, um, written in, um. Written statements or, um, things sent, put into record to give reason to look at the contract for wrongdoing. All in favor? All opposed? I need votes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking.
Sorry, all in favor?
I'm gonna say in favor.
Okay, all opposed? Did I get a real communal counselor, Bruce?
I abstain.
Abstain. We have to have a reason for abstaining or just abstaining? Okay. Okay, motion table, motion to table. I'm going to, um, take, have us take a, uh, ten minute break, so, um. We are in session. Can we do a five minute break? I'm not trying to be vain, but. Um, I'm going to suggest a ten for those, if anyone wants this moment or whatnot, and I do need to go to the bathroom and I do need a breather. So, um, ten minutes, so. Uh, let's come back at seven. Forty two.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm going to resume the meeting of the Lafayette City Council. So meeting is resumed. Um, up next is. Uh, the final proposed fee schedule. Uh, Brandon, I will yield that to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is just an F Y I. Um, I know last month we talked about having to pull this back. And doing some revisions as per state guidance. We have done those. Uh, Jasmine and Jamie did a great job on this. So this will be the final, um, this will be the final document that goes to the state for the official filing. And then we'll have a public hearing, um, and then a resolution if all goes well, um, that, um, public meeting should be coming, um. Should be at the, uh, should be at the April meeting if all goes well. So this is just kind of everything that was put together based off of, um. Staff discussions that we talked about, uh, three meetings ago. So this is just there for your eyes, um, and what will be coming to you all as part of a public hearing and resolution process.
Okay, and is there anything different on this in the, like, anything substantial?
No, it was some energy, um.
For what it's, just for what it's worth, I'm going to go ahead and announce a conflict on this, so I'm not going to discuss this.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, there was some energy savings items on here that we had to include in there that were part of the state mandate. There was also some stuff. That we had to mark remove, um, even though we don't have like, um. Uh, we wear altar add to heating appliances, refrigerating, a cooling, a door, absorbent system, certain things that we don't have, we had to put remove, we're removing. Um, even if we had it on there or the state had it on there for their guidance, um, and some of the medical gas.
Okay.
So, and then obviously here you see the system development charge to the current S T C schedule. But any of the forecasted S T C changes, if approved, will just be revised into this document.
Okay.
So.
But basically this is our last chance to easily get feedback before.
Yes, and I haven't received anything verbally or via email, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move forward with this as presented.
Any further council discussion or questions on it? Any questions from the public? Okay, so that was just for F Y I, right? No. Okay, um. McMinnville Water and Light Purchase Agreement Amendment Number Two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, as discussed in the past and, um, through the weekly emails. Um, we've been just talking with McMinnville because they made it known, uh, a few months ago that they were enacting their. Uh, utility, their interest rate clause, um. In the first contract, which allows them to, after the first five years of the contract. Starting that sixth year, they'll, they'll be able to, uh, increase the interest. Or match the level of interest that is currently in the local government investment pool, which is, uh, the investment pool that municipalities, special districts. And, um, other public utilities can use to help, um, uh, invest public money or their, their organization money. So we've been paying, uh, three point three. Percent, which was one, one point three percent plus a two percent admin fee. And going up as of the, the first payment in, or the next payment in August. It'll be effective for the next fiscal year at seven point two percent, which would be five point two percent plus a two percent admin fee. Um, we did have some, um, discussions with them and. After the meeting, we kind of came away with. There's not really much that they're willing to do with the interest rate because they want to be tied to that local government investment pool rate. I can't fault them. They're a business. They need to look at that aspect of it. But obviously I had different views as, um, uh, personnel operates a business. Um, but there's, there's, that was pretty much a non-negotiable, but there were some other things that were discussed in there, like evening the payments. As you see, year six, seven, eight, nine, ten, uh, in blue in the exhibit would be the new rates, um. All factored into an even payment because there were some years that they originally proposed that were two ninety, that were two ninety, two seventy, then like three ten. Three eleven, pretty substantial jumps year over year. So, um, we wanted to look at from a consistent payment every single year, so we know what the budget. And then also, um, looking at discussing of not changing that interest rate. Unless it matches the anniversary date, um, clause, which is what we like to include in there. So the current language has they can, uh, they can look or review the interest rate. At any time. After that five years. Which essentially, even though it's not practical, literally at any time, the, it goes up or down, they can do whatever they want. But we wanted to have protect the city for it. Saying that, hey, either go increase or decrease, it can only be done. At the anniversary date to kind of give something to them so they would be able to look at that. So there's, there's three different things that were proposed in this amendment. Nothing assigned today. This may need to be discussed further, but this is something we'd like to at least bring to.
And they, they would have to pass it.
They would have to pass it first, which got their next meeting on the nineteenth. And I do want to let everybody know that, um, Councilor Gilgan has been working with me as the lead on this. He plans to attend a meeting and speaking on behalf of council, um, as well as I will next week, and we want to at least approach this saying, this is what we're looking at. We understand that we can't do anything on the, uh, the interest rate, but interest of fairness and consistency of payment for budgeting. Can we at least have those, but can we at least have the interest spread out to match the principal payments so that everything is even?
Good question. Do we need to give approval for him to speak on behalf of council?
Uh.
Directive or?
Not necessarily. I've kind of voluntold him, but.
Okay.
I mean. Cause he's, he's one who's part of this.
No, I, I, I just, I just want to cover ourselves that, you know, in order to represent or speak on behalf of.
More of a, an assistant negotiator.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, so he's still, he's, he's your white, right wing man or whatever.
Or vice versa.
Cause I'm just saying, you're going.
Okay.
Okay, one of you can be goose or you can have her.
So, so in front of us is just what we're proposing. Um, so the adjustment language, um, under parties to the agreement agree as follows. Each fiscal year ending June thirtieth, the interest rate will be adjusted to match the local government investment pool rate. The interest rate will not be adjusted any other time. The payment schedule shall reflect equal payment by Lafayette in accordance with the grid herein. Which is where the even payments come out, um, for the consistency of the budgeting for the next fiscal years that precede us. Um, all that come after the, uh, these agreement date that passed. Um. The other discussion that we've talked during the past, I think we need to probably put on hold right now until we discuss this. Um, which we can kind of go into as, you know, needed in. Those water discussions, but for right now, I think this is the, the one thing that needs to be cleaned up in the short term. And as we talk long term, we can kind of talk that after this contract, because this is a pressing matter that needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
May I give my summation here?
I can stop out.
So we had our agreement with Mac Water and Light for the time. The interest rate revision that we're talking about was signed in an addendum to the agreement, so it was signed after the fact. To be totally honest, I was not aware this addendum took place. Um, it was. I, I do a lot of contract work in my day job. It seemed very lopsided and we were not shy about when we met with Mac Butter and my tongue on that. Especially after they kept throwing out that they want a partnership. And so, uh, Brandon was fantastic and told them like partnerships have a little more balance and they were. Willing to explore things with balance, but at the same time, their duty as an entity, they can't take less than the L G I P. L G I P, right, the local government investment pool. So they had to have that interest rate. So we took what we can get. We basically said, okay, right now you guys have the. Ability to adjust the interest rate anytime you want. So technically, they can adjust the interest rate. If the interest rates went up next week, they can do it again next week. Logistically, they couldn't. They would be in that there, right?
But they could do it. But they could do it after we've set our budget expecting of what to pay.
Anytime. Yeah. So, we basically came to a negotiation, which we expect they're taking in front of their entire commissioner set on the 19th, where once a year, the interest rate will be automatically adjusted to what LGIP is. And the reason.
That means up and down as well.
It could up or down. But the reason we want that is because under the old agreement, they weren't going to adjust it if the rate went down. They were only going to adjust it if they're. This gives us, this gives us a little balance. So, if the LGIP rate goes down, we get a break on the interest. And yes, it's a risk because it could go up, but interest rates are at a very high point right now. I think over the next four years, this is going to be more advantageous than disadvantageous. So, that's kind of my viewpoint, so.
And, and, and they didn't want to talk long, long term, but I think those discussions may be for later on in, in this council season or what that looks like for the next council, don't know. But thi- this is the short-term fix that needs to happen before we can really talk long term, because without this.
Effect, effect on rates, I think absolute worst-case scenario, if I'm wrong, is there may, if we have to get the last resort, especially after the water fiasco back in September, worst-case scenario, there may have to be a $3 or $4 addition to the surcharge, worst-case scenario. I think we're looking for creative solutions because of.
And that surcharge is 15 currently?
Yes, and I think share was gonna go up to 16.
So, the good news is, I, I think, again, we get a double check on it. I think worst-case scenario, we're talking about like $3 or $4 more per user. But we're also looking at creative ways to find that elsewhere and not have to necessarily do that just because of the sensitivity of water rates in recent.
And luckily, with the growth keeping up of what we projected, that may help us out too.
So, worst-case scenario, the percentage rate change alone is what would change that up to $3 to $4.
Right. So, the way we set the surcharge was debt obligation per year divided by number of meters. Everybody pays 15 bucks a month, we cover it. So.
I was just trying to get the.
We just redo that calculation, which we, we think would be maybe $3 or $4 a month.
Worst-case scenario, but I don't want, I don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
But I think we're gonna really look at the numbers here in the next few weeks, the budget coming up, if this goes well, to provide that ahead of the Budget Committee meeting.
And bring that down if the interest rates go down.
Correct. It's a debt service charge. It's tied to the debt. It, it won't stay like, once the debt's gone, that debt service charge. In theory, of course, we're not all guaranteed to be on the council when that happens, but in theory, that would go.
Because each year we set our water rates, we can each year change that service charge?
I mean, in theory, we can.
It's a budget.
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, okay.
Best new guide question. Where does the LGIPR come from? What is it? Is it?
It's a, it's a state-run, so they have people on the board of like from LOC, they have people on the board from, there's mayors, there is businessmen and, and like the private sector and the banking sector. So, it's, it's a, it's a, an Oregon state-run local government finance pool that it's only really specific towards local government, special unit districts because of the private, a lot of the bond investments. And so, they invest the money on behalf of the cities, kind of like a stock, but it's more into more publicly owned items across the country, bond programs, minimal, minimal, minimal risk investments, but still a return to the user.
I was, from my research, the, when you include the 2% administrative.
Yes.
Uh, generally, I looked at the last 20 or 25 years. Generally, it's within 1% of like going mortgage rates. That's generally where it lands. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how they determine it, but that's generally where it lands. Yeah.
And we did look, I did look at private sector loans to see what it would do just to maybe possibly refinance his debt and just to wash our hands with it. But I was getting quotes of like 9 to 10%.
Right now, it's not.
So, I, I did look. Now, one of the first things after I talked, I first brought this up three, four months ago to one of the counselors. And literally that same day, like, you, you're better off just staying where you're at, unfortunately.
Um, any more council questions or any public questions? Okay. And again, this is. Okay. Yep. Okay. Um, moving on to action items. Approval of the City Council minutes February 8, 2024. Are there any noted corrections needed? And if not, if someone wants to know.
I moved to approve the City Council meeting minutes from February 8 of 2024.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Minutes approved. Okay. Moving on. Uh, resolution number 2024-01, sales surplus property. Brandon?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, during the 2023-24 discussions, when we had asked for a new vehicle for the Public Works Facility, uh, for the Public Works Group, using that Dodge 2500 would help replenish some of the vehicle replacement fund. But then also when we're doing the surplus ordinance, we also came of the discussion back when the dump truck was ordered, that before I got here, a part of the 2223 budget, there was a, a dump truck ordered that would be replaced in surplus. And the surplus item would be the 2000, I mean, the 1989 Ford Dump Truck and then also the 2005 Dodge Dakota. So, both of those were kind of used and replaced by the dump truck that we got in March of last year. So, these were things that had already discussed during the previous Budget Committee discussions, and so just finally getting around to doing that.
So, that dump truck's that yellow one that's sitting there collecting bugs and stuff?
Yeah. Yes. So, and we do have some, we do have some issues on, on some of the items here, but obviously, it all depends on if this passes.
Okay. Right now, it's time to sell it.
How often do you go up and down? I'm so sorry. On the, I, I read the recommended motion here, and it includes donation. How often are we donating these things?
I haven't seen anything donated, but I know, say if it was, I'll use, for instance, a lawnmower. You know, you know, a nonprofit needed it. Now, cats, okay, we're gonna do this. We had a lawnmower for surplus. David, the city attorney, recommended doing a surplus resolution that certain things can come underneath certain criteria, but I know in the past, it's always been historically, the council would like to see surplus items come in front of them. So, we'll kind of continue operating unless you all feel differently. But very rarely does anything get donated. It was minimal value.
I would just, I would just rather see some cost recoup.
Oh, it'd be, I think we'll be that way. And if anything were to donate, I would probably come back and say, listen, we can't sell this. Are you okay with me donating this? But it shouldn't get to that point. So.
And I think one of the recent other surplus vehicles, the discussion was about donation stuff, and there was some good information on there that Preston shared about how low you go, you know, because they were also going to like open bid for the vehicle. And the counselor was like, well, I don't want to state how much our minimum bid is.
Yeah, we have to say surplus side, like where we just got the new tile for, for this Calcal Davis room. Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's a bunch of ways we can do it, and I know we've gotten a lead on at least one of the vehicles right now. So, if all passes, we can get that going, and I can update you on final sale prices and all that many going into the budget based upon sale.
Okay. Any questions for council for this?
Well, I'd just like to remove the word donation or specify that it gets to donation, then comes back for council.
You can remove that from motion.
Okay. So, at large, and that city administrator is appropriate.
All right. So, I move to approve resolution 2024-01, declaring the 2001 Dodge 2500, the 2005 Dodge Dakota, and the 1989 Ford Dump Truck surplus to the city's need, and direct the city administrator to dispose of the vehicles and the manor most advantageous to the city, including but not limited to a direct sale or sealed bidding.
A second.
And Brandon, do I, since it's a resolution, the orders, either they approve it, and then do I have to read it by title or?
You can read it by title.
And then, and then we vote?
Yes.
Okay. But do I have to ask for anyone's wanting me to read all the way, or can I just be?
That would be.
Okay. Okay. Before the city, okay, so I have a bunch on the table for resolution and number 202401, to approve the resolution read by title before the City Council for the City of Lafayette, Oregon, in the matter of the sale of surplus property, resolution number 202401. And the motion is to approve the resolution declaring the 2001 Dodge, 2000, 2500, 2005 Dodge Dakota, and the 1989 Ford Dump Truck surplus to the city's needs, and direct the city administrator to dispose of the van from the manor most adventurous to the city, including but not limited to a direct sale, and sealed bidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution passes. Okay. Um, next up, uh, resolution 2024-02, termination of the Downtown facade improvement grant program. Brandon?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this was brought to, this was brought to the council after a few months of discussion, going back and forth on where the, the grant program was in its current day. So, this resolution in front of you terminates the program. As you can see, we've had 20, $12,500 in expenditures. One grant was approved but not expended, and we've had four applications since the inception in 2015. And that's some of the data regarding that. And this was brought after numerous discussions from the policymakers.
Okay. Any council questions or statements on this? Any public?
To the planning commission?
No, it wasn't the, it was the down, was it?
It's our group.
Yeah, downtown.
Review of design.
Special Review Committee, yeah. So, this doesn't need to go there, because the City Council created the program, which establishes the board, you all can see status, terminate it anytime.
Any, um, public comments?
Hi, Greg Guler, P.O. Box 1077. Yeah, I realize there hasn't been a lot of usage of the grant program, the facade grant program. And, you know, I think it's probably appropriate to like dismantle it. But there might, you might want to keep some kind of mechanism available for matching funds or whatever the equivalent is going forward, or maybe you, you start a whole new grant facade program four years from now, five years from now, once the, once 99, once our corridor starts picking out.
Is that something that like falls under the urban growth or the urban?
It, it could, yeah. I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
And I just remembered that that was something that was brought up. It's one of the reasons that with that growing, it kind of overlapped. Okay.
Man, we could, I'm just, as somebody who actually sits on this committee, I support dissolving the program.
And currently, we just have two of you on, no, three of you. Travis?
Uh, yes.
And. Yeah, her, because she was the planning commissioner on it, so it automatically, okay. So, I guess if there's a motion.
I move to approve resolution 2024-02, which terminates the Downtown facade grant program effective March 14, 2024.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, before the City Council for the City of Lafayette, Oregon, a resolution in the matter of terminating the Downtown facade improvement grant program, resolution number 2024-02. There is a motion to approve the resolution or the termination of the Downtown facade grant program effective March 14, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, resolution passes. Um, joint work session with Planning Commission. Brandon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we have a, a fairly new council. We have a fairly new Planning Commission. And I think it's time we have a joint work session to discuss some deliverables for the Planning Commission. I have three new, three new members who are very aggressive, who want to get going. But I also want to make sure we acknowledge that we're doing work of the City Council's discretion. And so, I'd like to at least get a work session. I was hoping for May 16th and June 20th, but I think May 16th may actually have to be a Planning Commission day. So, it may be June 20th would work out. It's a Thursday, 6:30. I would try to keep it maybe 90 minutes. Uh, but I would like to use Jim Jackson's time here. So, I, I, I think it's good for the policymakers to know the, the Planning Commission and vice versa. But I also want to make sure that we're not doing things on Planning Commission time proactively. And then it may not be the, the directives of the City Council, you know, wasting resources for using budget time, budgetary items and, and staff time, but also everybody's time to volunteers and council.
You're suggesting June 20th.
June 20th at 6:30 PM, I would say about 90 minutes.
Okay.
So, we would have a meeting, we'd have a council meeting the week before June 13th. I know this is right before, this is the last day before summer.
So, I was just making a note, the June 13th meeting date, I will be unavailable and out of town.
Okay.
Oh. That's like. That's a council meeting.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was making a note, bring it up later, but since you mentioned.
Okay.
Before, I just wanted to put that.
Okay. No, I just was trying to follow. I was like, where's that? Okay. So, is everyone available as far as they know for June 20th?
And we have two members of the Planning Commission here that are already gonna be there anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I appreciate you guys coming. Um, okay, so. Um, I do agree with 6:30, which is what I do believe that there.
Yeah, very consistent now. I think everything's now at 6:30.
It should be 7, I think.
Yeah. We're not waiting for something to fall from meeting, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Someone wants to.
I move to schedule a joint work session for the City Council and Planning Commission for June 20th at 6:30 and have staff post the appropriate notices.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, I have a, a motion to schedule a joint work session for the City Council and Planning Commission for June 20th, 6:30 PM, and have the staff, excuse me, post the appropriate notices. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, so, um, the second reading of the ordinance, but this just goes straight into a public hearing, correct?
No, no, it would be since, we had a, a public hearing and we had a first reading in February. It would be the second reading.
Okay.
And open up for discussion.
Okay, so, is there any council that needs to abstain? Any, um, sorry. Any, um, I'm like, that it's our jurisdiction? Any state, any objections to it being our jurisdiction? Any objections to it being read by title only?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm happy to read it, but I am going to offer, since you're the one that wants it to, if you would like to read it, I'm gonna give you that opportunity. Okay. Before the City Council for the City of Lafayette, Oregon, an ordinance amending the Lafayette Municipal Code, Chapter 7, and the Zoning and Development Ordinance, LZDO, to move the marijuana zoning regulations from Chapter 7 to the LZDO and amend the language LA 2023-01. Ordinance number 645. The City Council, the Council of the City of Lafayette, Oregon, the city sat for the transaction of city business on Thursday, January 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM at City Hall. Whereas, in the spring of 2023, the City Council reviewed the Lafayette Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Business Section 7.960 through 7.995, marijuana facilities regarding the 1,000-foot buffers around the several types of marijuana facilities, and asked the Planning Commission to consider amendments to the 1,000-foot buffers. And whereas, the Planning Commission held work sessions at public meetings on August 17th and October 19th, 2023, to review and consider amendments to the current 1,000-foot buffers around one preschools, two public and private elementary schools and secondary schools, three career schools attended primary by individuals under the age of 21, four public property, not including rights of waste, five a medical marijuana facility, and six a licensed childcare facility. And whereas, during the Planning Commission's review, staff asked the Planning Commission to consider moving the zoning aspects of Sections 7.960 to 7.3, 7.995 marijuana facilities from the Lafayette Municipal Code, Chapter 7, to the Lafayette Zoning and Development Ordinance, which contains the city's regulations related to the use of land. And whereas, on November 16, 2023, the Planning Commission met to consider the proposed action regarding. On November sixteenth, two thousand twenty three, the planning commission met to consider the proposed action regarding planning file legislative amendment. Two zero two three dash zero one, an application by the city of Lafayette to amend the Lafayette municipal code, chapter seven, business. Section seven point nine six zero through seven point nine nine five marijuana facilities in the Lafayette zoning and development ordinances. L Z D O to move the marijuana zoning regulations. From chapter seven into the L Z D O and conduct a public hearing, at which time the public was given full opportunity to be present and heard. On the matter, considered the information provided by city staff and the public, and upon deliberation voted to recommend. The city council approved the proposed amendments. And whereas on January eleventh, two thousand twenty four, the city council met to consider the proposed actions regarding planning. File legislative amendment two zero two three dash zero one, an application by the city of Lafayette to amend the Lafayette municipal code. Chapter seven, business section seven point nine six zero through seven point nine nine five marijuana facilities. And the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance, L Z D O, to move the marijuana zoning regulations from chapter seven into the L Z D O. And conducted a public hearing, at which time the public was given full opportunity to be present and heard on the matter. Considered the information provided by city staff and public and received and and considered the recommendation of the planning commission. And passed a motion adopting the January eleventh, two thousand twenty four staff report recommending approval of the proposed amendments and. Whereas January eleventh, two thousand twenty four, during the city council's deliberation. The council passed a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance amending the Lafayette municipal code, chapter seven, business. And Lafayette zoning and development ordinance, L Z D O, to move the marijuana zoning regulations from chapter seven into the L Z D O. Now, therefore, the city of Lafayette, Oregon ordains as follows. Section one, the city council of the city of Lafayette does hereby adopt the staff report to the city council dated January eleven, two thousand twenty four. Including those certain findings of fact, conclusionary findings and supporting documentation contained therein, as shown in exhibit A. Attached here to and by this reference made a part thereof. Section two, the city council of the city of Lafayette does hereby amend the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance, section two. Point one zero five point zero one, commercial core district C one, permitted uses in section two one. Two point one zero six point zero two, commercial general district C two, permitted uses in section two. Point one zero seven point zero two, industrial district. One, is it one or I'm? Permitted uses to read as shown in exhibit B attached here and by this reference made a part here of. Section three, the city council of the city of Lafayette does hereby amend the Lafayette municipal code. Chapter seven, business section seven point nine six zero dash seven point nine nine five marijuana facilities. To read as shown in exhibit C attached here to and by this reference made a part here of. This ordinance shall take effect on the thirtieth day after its second reading by the council. Any discussion? Any public comment? Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance number six forty five, amending Lafayette municipal code, chapter seven, and the Lafayette zoning and development ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, um. So now we're on to the added F, which is. The city, um, approval of the city council work session minutes from last night.
Yes.
Sorry, I have not had a chance to read this one as well, okay.
And for those newest counselors, we have, anytime we have a special meeting or a work session, those minutes have to be approved at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. So we had to turn them over while within appropriate time, right?
Which is why you guys are just receiving these as you walked in. And then everyone have a chance to. Let me know if you need more time, okay?
I move to approve the city, Lafayette city council work session meetings from Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
And discussion, okay, I have on the table a motion to approve the city of Lafayette city council work session. Meeting minutes from Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty four at six thirty P M, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, let's pass. So department reports. That would be.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, couple of things real quick, I do want to introduce everybody to our new city recorder Kennedy here in front. Um, starting hopefully next month, depending how she does tonight with her minutes, next month we'll go back to formally having a city recorder join us. They'll be a part of the meeting, they'll be reading roll call. Um, I know the city recorder function kind of shifted a little bit once the pandemic came, but we're gonna go back to intrusion recorder. It's a part of the minutes and who knows who's gonna be here, so um, you'll see that, so welcome Kennedy to the, Kennedy to the team. I'm excited to have you, but I've already told you like eight times already, so, um, community resource fair, the uh. Event, the event flyer was just posted today.
Are we skipping code enforcement?
Oh, unless there was other questions about it.
Okay.
Community resource fair, Saturday, April sixth, got a bunch of people gonna be there, P G Northwest Natural. Uh, the school district, it's gonna be a fun day, I'm gonna be doing a presentation on Bridge Street and that timeline. Um, the citywide cleanup day just got announced right before this meeting started, it'll be June first. Um, so I'll be working on that, um, to make sure we have the successful one like last time, P G letter, um. From uh council was uh drafted or written, it looks like there's probably about four hundred public comments at the P U C. Um, regarding this rate increase, so I think the P U C is gonna have a. Harder time to approve a full rate increase this this time, especially with all the feedback coming from other cities now. Um, so I'll be monitoring that and I'll be going to speak at a P U C. Um, verbally showing that uh express, express the content of the letter. Couple of clarification things, I just want to make sure, um, first off, I want to apologize for last night. I wasn't feeling well and in me not feeling well, I realized that the report was for seven months, not six months. So some of those percentages that I said, hey, we need to be cautious. Good news, we don't have to be so cautious, no cautious, but not as cautious as I was worried about last night, but.
Can you update the, like, send out a clarification since budget committee was?
Yes, uh, that'll probably get done uh early next week. And just two follow ups, last uh month or two months ago, we were talking about grant applications and agreements. I've been working on something, thinking it was gonna be for this go around, like a three or four page application and agreement. But I heard maybe it's for next year, so is this something that we need for this year? Or something that we need for next year, because I I I'm.
Our timeframe because of the resolution stating that April first or whatever is the deadline for applications. I I wasn't under the assumption that we were gonna have anything for this year changed. Which was why I. That's I, I wasn't, I thought, I, that's why I had stated that I would reach out to anyone that applied and invite them. To come, but.
What about the grant application?
I'm ready to go with whatever, but I just want to confirm it's for this, this coming year. I can get out tomorrow, or is it for next year? I just need clarification on that.
So what do we do timeframe wise then because?
I can get it out tomorrow and they'll have.
Even the bit, the new one. Yeah, it can come out tomorrow.
Yeah, I can, I can revise it and get it out before the end of day tomorrow.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that was the intent.
Okay, and that will be available on the website too for people to get? Since.
Yes.
Okay, just.
And last clarification question, it looked like it got tabled earlier, are we still wanting to do these verbal report, uh, verbal reports?
So this is kind of something I've been pushing for. With how long these meetings are taking and we have a lot of discussion items and action items, my position would be. We get the written report that's included in the agenda and then. If we need to talk with them, you know, obviously they're welcome to be here, but I don't want, I don't think they should have to be coming here giving a thirty minute.
To read, basically read what's on their paper.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to have the sheriffs send twice here or whatever. But I don't think they need to come in and read a report that we've all looked at before the meeting.
It's kind of the same thing as code enforcement, that's what I'm proposing here.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of was already on that mind frame where tonight I was gonna mention that like, it's not a time for public comment with it, that it's.
I just want to make sure because I, that was a part of my thing when I came in was that department, uh, council relationship. But then I also know sometimes the questions are like fire or pu- public works, I just want to make sure if I'm not doing this, I'll do strictly verbal. But I know that was kind of my push, so.
Then it's on us, if we have questions, we need to be getting in touch with you sooner to have them here to answer.
Yeah, or if there's something. Something, something happens between the time the report is. Initiated, like I know that tonight Chad was planning to share something new.
I, and I just want to throw out with your, uh, with your mention of like council relationships, we have fantastic people. Like Robert always says hi to me when he runs out, the sheriff stop and say hi, I hope it's the same for other counselors, but we have fantastic folks. Yeah, we don't want to waste their time.
All right, I'll start on the next agenda, I'll just put all the department reports, um, on the department reports, unless.
Annually or quarterly or.
Well, we can, as needed, we can request, hey, it's been a while, can you?
Come say hi.
It would make sense towards the end of the year, so we can do a recap of the year.
And so Brandon, since we're still on your report, had, did you have a chance during the break to touch chase with Chad? If there was an update that you needed to share on his behalf?
Well, I think I can, the update you have was regarding the Mack water line, uh, you boosters. You wanna just do a quick thing on that?
Since it was such a, uh. Brought up and we went over such in detail with the uh pressure loss event. Uh, I have found that your Mack water light station had the incorrect flow meter, so it was never running properly. Never supplying the flow that it said it was, so the.
On our end or their end?
That's on our end, their end for billing has a different flow meter, it's fine. But as far as what we thought was being pumped into the system and the control system thought, it was not, it was. A third or a quarter of that, that's why we lost water pressure. Because we had the system running, but it was never, it's hardly run.
So has that been fixed?
It has been fixed and resolved, so all of your joint system, water numbers have always been wrong.
But the billing, I just want to make clear, the billing.
No, it's not causing you any justice.
And it's not something the residents have been over, under billed for, it, that's a separate.
Yeah, billing is perfectly fine. But it's about the pressure and also about your historical data, completely wrong. And this is never provided what it was supposed to, so. Uh, because that thought it was pumping, our max is five hundred gallons a minute, so it thought it was pumping like four hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So it tries to close so we don't hit our max, but it was only pumping a hundred gallons a minute.
Okay, so losing pressure during that big thing ended up being a good, not. A good thing, but it led, now we know why.
On you guys to be aware, that's fixed, but it was like.
Good work, thank you, thank you.
So yeah, I wouldn't even say something like that if during your report, you know, hey, I have a last minute update from, you know, so that we. We value our time and I also value the cost of having them here.
And just one last, we're real quick thing, uh, new meters are being installed, as you see them. You'll probably see them in your, uh, your yards, assessing the lead and copper, um, corrective from the E P A. But also changing out the water meters to the new Mueller, um, automated reads, so hopefully. Soon.
Okay, um, so the last thing is proclamation for Parkinson awareness. Month, okay, whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic regenerative neurological disease. And is second most common neurolog- neurodegenerative disease in the United States and. Sorry, whereas the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research is dedicated to finding a cure for Parkinson's disease. Through an aggressively funded research agenda and to the, and to ensuring the development of improved therapies. For those living Parkinson's today, and whereas there is inadequate data on the in. Incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but it is estimated to affect nearly one million people in the United States. Including more than twenty thousand people in Oregon and that number is effect, expected more than double by two thousand forty one. And whereas symptoms include tremors, stiffness. And slow movement, difficulty swallowing, depression, sleep disorders and dementia. Whereas it is estimated that ninety thousand individuals are diagnosed annually with Parkinson's disease in North America. Fifty percent higher than the sixty thousand annual diagnoses that research previously suggested, while it is estimated that. More than one point six million people in the United States will be impacted by Parkinson's disease by two thousand thirty seven. And an estimated economic burden of fifty eight billion annually. And whereas there is no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease and available treatments. Are limited in their ability to address patients' medical needs and remain effective over time. And whereas the city of Lafayette recognizes the efforts of the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research. As it leverages its core values of optimism, urgency, resourcefulness, collaboration, accountability and persistence. And problem solving to work on behalf of the six million people worldwide living with Parkinson's. Whereas increased research, education and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments. And to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today, now therefore I hereby proclaim. April two thousand twenty four to be Parkinson Awareness Month. Okay, and with that, that brings us to the end of the meeting, do I have motion? Oh, sorry, you're right, any council reports?
I just want to note that, uh, with, you know, I noted that June, the scheduled council date might not work for me, obviously, if one council. But if there's other people with summer travel plans and whatnot, let's get out of those next month, then make adjustments as needed.
Yes, um.
And you have the ability to change a meeting date, just in that Y I.
We're gonna have, have form on a certain date, let's make sure we adjust.
Yeah, so please, please look at your calendars and as much as possible.
Talking about the June date?
The June one I would be. There could still be a form without me, but if other people have that.
Yeah, so let's try for the rest of this, like, for the summer, not to, to know that. And I totally support that, that somebody else might have blocked that out to be here. And a date that, you know, like, you should be trying not to mess with those, as long as there's a quorum. So, so, okay, motion is.
Happy birthday card, you got a.
Oh, well, I wasn't allowed to say that out loud because it was in my.
Motion to adjourn, I move to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Name of, meeting adjourned. Now that meeting adjourned, Russell, I have a birthday card if you would like to sign up for. That is turning a hundred and eight tomorrow.